We provide light, gardens, tents, basically. We focus on healing. We provide permanent homes, so there's no ending of the sentence. And then we are focused on ensuring that people get the services they need on sight, that they're participating in the community, and that they can rebuild their lives with their families. So, I would just offer that as an option and as a resource in terms of providing another model for housing people struggling with mental illness and with substance abuse. And to be comfortable.
Thank you. Next.
Sheila Pinkel and her friend, Eleanor J. El. Instead of the scenario described in the Vander report, which maximizes incarceration, let's imagine the following. If pre-trial non-felons are non-incarcerated, if non-violent mentally ill and substance abused people are housed in facilities, in community-based facilities, if non-non-nons have their sentences reduced to split sentencing and probationary release, if non-non-non mothers are given probationary release so that they can be there for their families, then the population in L.A. County jails will decrease significantly. And we could have a much more modest proposal for building new jails. The rest of the money could be used for community-based programs for substance abuse and mental health. Every candidate for sheriff has campaigned on a platform of jail population reduction. The Vander Plan will force the incoming sheriff to administrate an inflated incarceration system of the sheriffs on campaigning against. The CEO of Geo Group has said, "If you build it, you will fill it." At a time when jurisdictions throughout the country are reducing jail populations, the Vander Plan is an invitation to perpetuate inflated incarceration in L.A. County.
Please, no pause, thank you. Now, next. When I ask Brittany White-Schmidt and Peter Eliasberg to join us up here.
My name is Christina Ronquist. I'm a graduating MSW student from the University of Southern California, and for the last year, I have interned at the Century Regional Detention Facility, the female county jail in Linwood, and experienced firsthand how invasive mental illness is being treated. These women are kept in their cell 23 hours a day. Deputies often refuse to let them out for groups. Clients of mine who are incompetent to stand trial are being held in solitary confinement for petty assault. Clients of mine on suicide watch have lost their mattress and have denied underwear and feminine hygiene products necessary to prevent them from menstruating on themselves. These clients complain of being left handcuffed to the table for hours, reporting that deputies are refusing their request to use the restroom, and cry that they are being called retards, bitch, pores, and told that they are bad mothers. Just recently, my client, who had recently attempted suicide, was abused by a deputy who slammed her fingers in the door after she refused to move her hand, causing serious injury. This abuse and mistreatment will not change by building a new facility that is supervised by the same sheriff's department. Further, what I observed is heavily medicated women who are offered completely inadequate mental health services seen for 10 minutes, often every six to eight weeks, by commonly jaded clinicians who are burdened by heavy caseloads. These combined factors have created an inhumane and toxic environment that exacerbates symptoms of mental illness. Women are decompensating at crisis levels, and oftentimes, non-violent women who are abused and neglected once inside the jail soon stop eating and showering, or revert to playing with bodily excrement, or engage in violent and aggressive behavior, often compiling trash and refusing to come out of their cells. These problems are the same that the DOJ identified in 1997 and again in 2013. For example, being handcuffed to the table for hours on end is exactly what the DOJ found in 2013. Until the institutional dynamics themselves change, inmates will continue to suffer. The only way to improve these conditions is to put emphasis on prevention and diversion.
Wow. We'll clap if we want. They can't stop us either. It's against the law for them to stop us.
Work extensively as a psychiatrist in populations with severe mental illness and significant incarceration.
You are awesome. If she is. I believe that some of the really key points have been brought forth by Sir Rizalov, supervisor Antonovich, supervisor Slavsky. The situation here is one not only of fiscal and ethical, but philosophical scope. Are we looking to continue with the approaches that we have that are clearly not working? Or do we move towards different models? In particular, I would ask you, what would we do with the billion dollars that is focused on younger antoinos in this county and their mental health? What would we do with the billion dollars to end homelessness in this county? Either of those maneuvers would have a significant impact on the number of mentally ill people in prison and in jail. This is also true about the resources, such as education, training, employment, and family support, and access to spiritual form health. These interventions will change the game. This is a philosophical move in a different direction from the same approach that we are using, which is not working. So I ask you to listen to the CJMHP crew and enrich this environment, this county, for the benefit of its constituents, so that they do not end up with mental illness in jails and prisons.
Thank you. I'd ask George Bazzetti.
I'm Brittany White. I'm a member of the National Life and Wellness Association of LA County. I'm a member of our 30 defendants, people with mental illness, their family, and their friends. We support the potential construction of the CCTS as an improvement in criminal justice infrastructure in order to provide appropriate care to individuals with serious mental illness. We do not, however, support a process that does not recognize the need to reduce the numbers of justice-involved offenders with mental illness and fails to plan for substantive reinvention of our county's criminal justice system. To determine the size and scope of a new jail in the absence of serious consideration of diversion programming is incomplete and inappropriate. We are honored to participate in District Attorney Jackie Lacy's Criminal Justice Mental Health Task Force. This effort is the most important dialogue occurring in our county at present, and it should be allowed to complete and submit a plan for systems change. How can we proceed with a $2 billion jail plan without being informed by the strategic vision of our DA and the efforts of the entire criminal justice system whom she is conning especially for this purpose? The task force's final recommendation should reduce the number of individuals with mental illness in the jail, which should guide the planning process for the size and scope of the jail. We respectfully request to allow further study by the task force. The plan for the new jail should be developed in concert with the serious efforts undertaken by this task force. Thank you.
Next.
Supervisor Antonovich, having insulted me and the organization I work for, I would appreciate it if you'd at least listen to my comment. I know you think that the only interest that the ACLU has is releasing criminals from jail. So perhaps, but I won't state our position. I'll state the position of six of the seven sheriff's candidates, all of whom oppose the jail plan and have so stated in their comments and sheriff's debates. Chief Jim McDonald, Long Beach, I don't think he's soft on crime and really just wants to see the community victimized. He said, in relation to this jail plan that you've made a motion to move forward on, "We need to step back. A new sheriff is a major stakeholder in this." And then he pointed out, which this board doesn't seem to be recognizing, "It's not just a 2002 memorandum of agreement. DOJ has an active investigation right now, and based on what Ms. Ronquist said, my guess is that there will be new findings and a new request for a different memorandum of agreement or consent decree that Vander cannot have anticipated because they don't see it yet." So why would you wait and push forward on a jail plan until you know what the Department of Justice is going to say? And my guess is, it's not going to be pretty. James Holmelt said, "I don't think we need new bed space. I want to work on focus on getting the mental health ill out of the jail." Bob Olmstead, "I don't believe he's soft on crime, unlike the ACLU." It's going to be catastrophic if the Board of Supervisors decides about a new jail without the input of a new sheriff. We've never been in a situation where L.A. jails weren't overcrowded. Unfortunately, this new plan being discussed by the Board of Supervisors doesn't address the real issue at hand, and that's dealing with the mentally ill. Lou Vince, "I support modernizing the jails, but this particular plan, I don't support this particular plan because it's one more Band-Aid on the wound that is the L.A. criminal justice system." Todd Rogers, "I think the new sheriff needs to be consulted on what we're going to do with our jail system." I could also make comments from Mr. Gomez. Mr. Tanak appears to be the only candidate running for sheriff who supports this plan. So in somewhere less, perhaps in June, or certainly by November, you're going to have a new sheriff and every one of those candidates.
I would just ask, and I also thought Chief McDonald, some of his comments are taken out of context. Thank you.
Well, it's just a quote from a transcript in a debate. I need my real time here, people. I didn't have my real time. It's like L.A. Unified, okay? So, I heard you all here talking about the supremacy clause. Why don't you care about it, or the DA, or the AG, or anybody concerning L.A. Unified replacing Marguerite Lamott and the iPads? It's against the law with two U.S. Supreme Court decisions. Now to this. I've never, and I know more about construction and fraud than any of you here, because I've been busting L.A. Unified since 1998. Two to three times the cost of construction, okay? Nobody cares. You've had 10 years on this issue? This is the biggest bunch of junk I've ever seen in my life. Van here, they didn't give you the numbers, did they? Do you have the numbers per square foot of what it costs? How many square foot per prisoner? What the bed space costs? What the variation is, like from 372 grand to 661? When you see the numbers that they put in their summary, that's junk! Do you guys do your homework? I didn't hear a person up here that knew anything that was in that, and I only started reading it last night at 7:00. And I've added numbers on the bus coming here. Now, why did you give that job to me? I'd have given you a deal. Now I want to know, are you financing this with COPs or bonds? Do you know the difference? Bonds are voter-proof. COPs you do without us. I hear two different games here today. And let me tell you something, I represent Core California. We got 116 years in this. Celeste King just killed himself on these issues. Do you understand? He killed himself. I left him just before he crashed, waving goodbye on the freeway, setting him up in a wheelchair. You're going to give this issue some respect. I have on video these new sheriffs last Saturday, all making statements on this, and we have the right to clap. I will bring you the teach law. As a L.A. Unified lawyer, I will state to you. Enough of this. Corruption.
My name is Patricia Cutler. I'm the executive director of D.C. Power Now. A question for the board, if you have a loved one who suffers with mental illness.
Got carried away, man.
Well, I have. I'm hearing the story.
Now, let's get this one.
My brother has a psychotic episode. He is manic and paranoid. He encounters the police. He evades the police because he is frightened. The officer doesn't know how to relate to mental illness. They shoot him with rubber bullets. He ends up at a hospital and is handcuffed to his bed. Mind you, he is still in an episode. He gets transferred to a tower. At this point, he's being assessed as an individual who did a quote crime instead of someone who needs a hospital or treatment facility. For the following two months, my brother's denied medication, even though myself and my mother have begged the sheriff's department to have my brother see a psychiatrist. In contrast, if he were at a hospital or a treatment facility, which he has also been in, his treatment would and has been looked qualitatively different. Board of Supervisors, invest in a plan that looks at diversion for the mentally ill population. Building a jail is not diversion. Our families' lives depend on it.
Would ask Cameron Brown and Dino, Jim Sarbanas, Heather O'Brien, Joseph Maslis to join us, please.
All right, guys. Go do your job, good dudes. Oh, you're not speaking? Oh, you're not in, okay, I got it. You're not in this pack. Man, he got to speak.
I'll load this up tonight.
You save the 7% of your civilism rate, and fund community programs and support the view of people coming home from prison. Provide them with ID, medical records, healthcare, housing, job training, and bus pass. Not to judge, but to invest in the communities' needs, not cages. And you can't also compare hospitals with prisons. Hospitals are actually helping the community, while prisons and jails are harming the community and the environment, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Next.
Hi, my name is Cameron Brown and Dino, I'm a lecturer.
Oh, rush now, but not for you, huh?
I have research in depth, based on incarceration in California and the United States and the world over the past six years. Actually, the inattention of the board members speaks volumes to how you feel about our comment. I think that's very symbolic, the chair turns around. It's very symbolic. And what I'd like to say is that the architects, I mean, the architects of slavery in America, we're not necessarily saying how we could expand the system. They're saying, when they wrote the Thirteenth Amendment, how should we replace it? That's the rhetoric that we hear today. You know, so it's echoey today. The rhetoric that we hear from these people is very much so echoey today. And from the research that these people are presenting, not one of them has cited the paradigmatic analysis of psychological trauma within an institution, which is Stanford Prison Experiment, which says that, like Mark Ridley-Thomas was questioning whether incarceration is to heal or exacerbate trauma, the results of that experiment clearly state that it exacerbates trauma, both for incarcerated persons and prisoners. So incarceration is not good for anyone. And that's what I have to say. Also, that social abandonment, meaning cutting all these programs, creates mental illness. People aren't born mentally ill. It's generational. You know, social abandonment creates mental illness. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Heather O'Brien. I'm with an organization called Critical Resistance. I'd like to echo what the gentleman before me just said. It's very disheartening to wait here for two hours and listen to all of you and what you have to say, and you don't get the same respect. I think that's unfair and unjust. So as I said, I'm with an organization called Critical Resistance. It's a nationwide organization that is an abolitionist movement against the prison industrial complex. I would urge you to stop all jail expansion plans in L.A. County and invest dollars in programs that build strong communities. Jails harm our communities. Experts studying the community's experience show that locking people up causes more problems than it solves. People lose jobs, homes, and children. Mental and medical health are harms we neglect and violate. Families in community, particularly of the poor and people of color, miss the contributions of those with proper support programs and could build their own communities. We really need to stop the jail expansion and invest in our communities, not in cages. The extreme violence in L.A.'s jails should be a reason to shrink and not expand or revise the system. Decades of violence enacted by the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department has resulted in multiple investigations, including one by the FBI and one initiated by the County Board of Supervisors, you guys. So I would really urge you today to consider what alternatives could be done. I was actually at the MAP Center for Art and Architecture a week ago, where there was a public forum with various architects and artists who were thinking about what could we do with that money that you're thinking about using in Mar-a-Loma in a different way. And I could tell you that the results were extraordinary, and these were professional architects and artists who were coming up with innovative solutions. So I urge you to consider some alternative options. Thank you very much.
You, Mary Sutton, Joseph Thomas, Arianna Alcaraz, and Benji Kuti.
Good afternoon. Joseph Maslis, a marriage and family therapist. Why I am here, Supervisor Antonovich, is because over the last 20 years and more, as a marriage and family therapist, I have on the page and serve perpetrators of crime and victims of crime, parents whose children are victims of crime on the streets, and others who have survived workplace mass shootings. That's why I'm putting in the time that I have available to help you with this and work for your success in this. I don't like those crimes, and I believe there are wiser ways to reduce their incidence. Where would we be, by the way, now if those recommendations that you got two and a half years ago and more had been employed aggressively? We aren't talking about diversion, not just of people, but diversion of funds from incarceration to programs, including as serious supervision methods as needed, and to focus on confining those who are actually dangerous. And Supervisor Antonovich, again, you focused about Mr. Hubbard, people who are really adjudicated. Suppose we put that money into real programs of assessment? Assistant Sheriff Donald is starting one. Starting now? Where would we be? And what size institutions would we be talking about? The one foundation that has a big crack in it that lies underneath what Vander has proposed to you? I remember two years ago, two and a half years ago, Supervisor Knabe and Supervisor Antonovich voted against supporting the governor's, what became Proposition 30. He said, "Show me state reductions in spending, and then, if you still need it, I'll be willing to vote for funding taxation and support taxation." How about applying that same kind of thinking here? Show us what those projects can do, what reduction can do, not just, as Sir Slavsky, I hope you will favor actually seeing reductions take place that could have been taking place for two and a half years.
Thank you.
We'd be in a different position now. Let's not jump ahead without having actual experience.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Marcia Temple, Esther Lim, Mariela Saba.
My name is Mary Sutton. I'm a member of Critical Resistance. I'm representing the No More Jails L.A. Coalition and California United for Responsible Budget, which is a statewide alliance of 55 organizations fighting prison and jail expansion across the state. Thank you, Supervisor Zad Yaroslavsky and Mark Ridley-Thomas. Thank you, the DA Lacy, for some finding, hearing some voices of sanity. I implore you to not move forward with this plan presented by the Vineyard Construction Management, Inc. None of the options considered reducing the number of people locked up in L.A.'s notoriously violent jails, none of the options considered investing in community-based programs that are proven to reduce recidivism and create safer communities, none of the options considered federal and state legislation coming down the pipe to decriminalize small drug possession and reduce the disparities in drug sentencing laws, none of the options considered using split sentencing or parolee for harm, none of the options considered more humane alternatives outside of jail, especially alternatives to locking up people with mental illness and poor women of color who have been victims of violence their whole lives. Thirty-two percent of the population in L.A. County Jail are realignment, non-serious, non-violent offenders. Fifty-two are pre-adjudicated, waiting trial. Most of them can't afford bail. Petty crimes, jaywalking, traffic tickets. This is hidden in L.A. County jails. And it's a fact. And I just want to make clear that Terry McDonald has given false information to the board. There are 7,000 realignment people in the jail. Eleven hundred of those are women. All of the realignment population is serving 100% of the sentence.
Yep.
She lied when she said that women are only serving 10% of the penalty.
Thank you.
The rest of the counties across the country, across the state, realignment populations are serving 35% of the sentence.
Mariela Saba. Esther Lim. Marcia Temple. Are you at the table, the three of you? Okay. Jennifer Hart-Nights. Go ahead, you have her next. Oh, God. Ready?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board of Supervisors.
Fantastic.
I agree with many speakers.
You are.
I am Marcia Temple.
Yeah, Marcia. Starter time over.
Thanks. I agree with many speakers that no jail plan option should be decided without the thorough analysis that the District Attorney's group is prepared to develop. We need to remember when we're talking about mental illness, that jail is not a therapeutic environment. Nobody goes there to get well. Incarceration substantially destabilizes people with mental illness. If there is an option for them in the community, it should be considered. Definitely, wait until this decision is made, until we have a new sheriff who is responsible for the oversight of a new jail. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon. My name is Asher with the ACLU, the jail's public director. I wanted to take the time to actually thank the supervisors who are present, listening to you about the public comment. The best estimate for the jail population from Vander and other states that it will remain between 19,000 and 20,000. Current estimates are that 17% of inmates in L.A. jails suffer from severe mental illness that works out to 3,200, 3,300 inmates with severe mental illness. Vander is now projecting 3,216 mental health beds. Dr. Southern assumes substantial diversion. How is that possible when this plan assumes the same number of mentally ill inmates that's currently there? We know L.A. has no significant post-booking diversion program. We also know that the DA Jackie Lacy has invested pieces of programs in Miami and other jurisdictions. Moreover, we also know that L.A. has just received funds from the Mental Health Services Act to start a serious pre-booking diversion program, but not such a program as this today. What we do not understand is how Dr. Southern claims that the projection of 3,216 mental health beds presents substantial diversion when, number one, the county does not currently have a significant pre-booking or post-booking program in place; two, both inmates and the DA are looking to develop a serious pre- and post-booking diversion program; three, the plan Vander proposes has enough beds for the current population of inmates of mental illness, which exists without the counties doing any serious diversion. The key point is that we are not doing diversion at the rate we plan to and need to. Thus, the 3,260 bed number does not presume future levels of diversion.
Thank you. You are Mariela?
Mariela Saba. I am grateful for my ability to move, to leave my home space, to have a home space, to make it here, to speak in honor of millions, past and present, whose ability to move and speak freely has been stolen, taken, violated, beaten, forced, and hanged. I ask of all present here to rise and stand up and hold silence in solidarity with every being incarcerated worldwide and their families outside.
Jennifer Hart-Nights, Jabrielle Mohammed, Keen O'Brien.
I'm not done.
Oh, I bet you stopped.
No, no, we are honoring people who are incarcerated. price, cheaper billions, millions, of speaking in terms of beds, not people, masked by misconceptions of diversion. How sad and sick of you all to dare negotiate people's mental health inside cages. There is no new and improved. There is no state-of-the-art jails. Replacement on more terms is never a solution. There exist real, healthy transformative solutions and none of them include jails and prisons. True replacement means replacing this brutal system completely, holistically, altogether. The communities here have real power and real solutions. I see you in your position.
Thank you.
Sitting on piles of shame, fear dominates your action, greed dominates your addiction, shame on each of you for the role you are playing in these places on this earth.
Jabrielle Muhammad.
I will continue to fight to bring down these systems and reclaim, reclaim recovery.
Thank you.
Reclaim our lives.
(inaudible) (inaudible) This is my justice movement. I'm speaking in regards to the facility and the mental health. And we know that (inaudible). I would like to see the mental evaluation of the sheriffs themselves. We know that they perpetrate, as a matter of news, they perpetrate extremely crimes upon the population that they have to serve. And I'm curious as to what their mental analysis would be. I would like very much for that to be accepted as to the $2 billion being spent. That's an excessive amount of money for a facility for them to only perpetrate and perpetrate through various crimes that they're committing against the people and just let down the system. I would object to any $2 billion being spent to build a facility. I would like very much that money to be allocated to analyze the plight of mental health and to come up with a resolution that has nothing to do with incarceration per se, for so few committed crimes. But if you have been analyzing to be someone who is mentally imbalanced or unbalanced, then we should put all stock to help remedy your scenario. But here again, my thrust is to evaluate the state, the mental state of the sheriffs themselves.
Thank you. Mike Aldredes, Karen Shane, Geraldine Deekrich, and Eric Brown.
Thank you. My name is Paula Perlman. I'm the executive director of the Disability Rights Legal Center and I'm a law professor at Loyola Law School. I teach disability rights and I have a special expertise in the American Civil Rights Act, especially Title II of the ADA as it applies to government entities. So until we heard from Supervisor Ridley-Thomas and Supervisor Yaroslavski, this was a train straight into a lawsuit. Incarceration instead of treatment would violate the Olsted versus L.C. U.S. Supreme Court decision.
All right.
The DOJ's primary interest right now is looking at Olsted issues, where you are unnecessarily segregating people with disabilities in institutions. And building the jail and without treatment options would violate the ADA. So I really think that we need to step back, take the train out of service, look at the diversion options, let the task force do its job, avoid litigation, and listen to people who actually oppose the construction and are deeply concerned about our community and public safety and how we use our resources in this community to treat people and not to harm them. Thank you.
So I assume Mike Snugger, Karen Shane, Geraldine Deekrich, Eric Brown, Carl Sachs, Mellow, Rachel Desiree, Sydney Ross Rysden, Aristen, and Ruth Tedasco.
Hi, my name is Mellow Desiree. I am filming for youth activists for incarcerated, abused homeless individuals. The point is, Veneer's presentation today was, it is what it is. They're here to invest for the sponsors of CXW, GEO, SCG, VNX. A lot of these prison stocks that are being filled are being paid for, needs to be filled. So therefore, they're going to talk about beds, they're going to talk about numbers. But the people who I'm representing, the individuals who are before they become in jail, are normal people, but they're victims of society who don't have any educating education in simple things. They are coming from abused homes and they have law enforcement that says, "Okay, we don't give you resources, but we're going to lock you in cages if you do something bad." So people like Veneer are here just to civilize the mass of millions rather than helping people mentally, physically, or even looking at people as people. It's about numbers. So me being in that instance, trying to represent inner-city youths and homeless and incarcerated, I certainly am going through my homeless bait down in Skid Row. I've been approved for housing, but Housing Authority of Los Angeles, run by Donald Gundry, denied my housing. Why is that? I still need to know. So for me to even have a place to stability to help these inner-city youths, to help any incarcerated, I can't even do that. So when it comes to numbers, I realize that it's not about people, it's about money. And when we get down to the point of all these people saying what they feel of where funding is going, it's falling on deaf ears because at the end of the day, you're going to do whatever you guys feel is right for your pocket, not for the people.
Thank you. Robert Moore and Andy Israel.
My name is Sydney Ross Ryston. I'm from the global women's strike. I'm also a mother, a grandmother, and a registered nurse. Here to say that women of L.A. do not need a new or bigger jail for women. The proposed Miraloma site is 75 miles away from our communities and the building is unfit for human habitation. L.A. jails about 2,000 women daily, disproportionately women of color. Forty-six percent of women are being held in jails just because they can't afford bail. As many as 70% of women jailed in L.A. are mothers, the majority single moms, with the greatest impact on Black and Brown families, whose children are at risk of ending up in foster care or being adopted. 11% of women are severely mentally ill. You heard the young woman who's interning at the women's jail in Lynnwood. And Superior Court Judge Terri Smurling said in the Los Angeles Times that being incarcerated is likely to exacerbate mental health problems and to increase the likelihood that inmates will commit new crimes upon their release. It's really good to hear you seriously discuss diversion for people with mental illness for the first time. If you commit to implementing community-based mental health and drug abuse diversion programs, and we urge you to add family reunification and pre-trial release programs, then there's no need for a new women's jail. Women urge you to reject construction of the women's jail and instead to prioritize reducing the poverty of women, which results in women being criminalized in the first place. $2 billion would be a good start. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ruth Tedasco. I'm speaking on behalf of the Every Mother is a Working Mother Network. I'm a mother and a grandmother. And what we see is that women are the fastest-growing population of those being incarcerated with minimum wage levels so low that we cannot support ourselves or our children and the dismantling of any safety net, including welfare. Women are forced to do whatever we can to keep a roof over our heads and feed our children, resulting in increasing numbers of moms being penalized. 1,400 of the women jailed in 2013 were mothers. Their children were at grave risk of ending up in L.A.'s troubled foster care system or adopted out to strangers. Building a new jail 75 miles away in Lancaster will make regular visiting for families and loved ones prohibitively expensive, a separation especially traumatic for children. The alternative to create video visitation limits physical family contact, which has been shown to reduce recidivism by 25%. Mothers of L.A. urge you to reject this plan of a new women's jail. It would be unconscionable to spend over $20 million to build a new women's jail, plus millions more to run the facility, rather than prioritizing resources to end the poverty of women and children in L.A. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just thank you. Good afternoon, Carl Sachs. I heard a lot of different things. First of all, this perception is regarding the sheriffs and the oversight of the new jails, they may have the oversight of the new jails, but it's the Board of Supervisors that negotiate with the ranking file regarding policies for the sheriff. The sheriff doesn't involve in all the negotiations. He gets a deal with what the Board of Supervisors and ranking file decide what is policy. Makes it very tough to have any kind of oversight regarding position. Residential drug treatment outreach program, that means dealing with the 88 other communities in the county. Have you been in the local city council meetings where you discussed that? Tough. Maybe, well, it reminds me, but really reminds me, this discussion is an outside the box and people just focus on some things, but changing the spots on a leopard for discussions about funding. Have you looked into anything these people have done regarding the transit situation in this county? You know, a few years ago, they talked about measure R of raising $40 billion. But the budget process from the year before showed that the Metro, Department of Transportation Authority was making less than $700 million a year. So they were going to double sales tax revenue in less than a year, and nobody's questioned it. These are the same people that are coming up with these numbers. You can't change the spots on a leopard. You really want change, you better start when you go to vote, go to vote with a recall in mind. And somebody suggested they change it with suggestions. ECFS was honored today, and yet they have a Blue River Commission to tell you how lousy ECFS is doing.
Thank you.
Keep that in mind, read a whole agenda.
Sir, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Robert Moore. I'd like to quote from an outback piece in the L.A. Times by Terri Smurling, who's a judge on the Los Angeles County Superior Court. He says, "As a Los Angeles County Superior Court judge with more than 31 years on the criminal bench, I am all too familiar with what happens when people with serious mental illness get caught up in the criminal justice system. I have seen firsthand that jail is an inappropriate place for many of the mentally ill defendants to end up there. Being incarcerated is likely to exacerbate mental health problems and increase the likelihood that inmates will commit new crimes upon their release. Instead of spending large amounts on a better type of experience for them, we should spend money on local treatment programs that would keep low-risk offenders with mental illness out of jail. The vast majority of the mentally ill defendants who appear before me have been charged with low-level nonviolent offenses such as opposed defense or simple drug possession. And my goal is generally to try to place them in appropriate mental health programs as a condition of probation. But this has become increasingly difficult because of a shrinking number of treatment slots." I'll have to skip over the rest. Surely Judge Smurling would support Supervisor Yaroslavski and Supervisor Ridley-Thomas in calling for very serious exploration of diversion possibilities. And that should happen not just parallel to, but rather before a decision is made about the second plan.
Thank you. The two motions are before us.
Okay.
My understanding, I'm advised that the numbers that were created by Supervisor Yaroslavski, the numbers have been vetted by the CEO's office. When it comes to staffing, I think what's important before we can finalize those numbers, one critical element is something simple like the four. I believe as we move forward right now, and we start working with the architect that we'd like to bring onboard, we can have some greater clarity on the space that would be available for staff and that will also help us finalize the staffing. Then we'll have a independent analysis of the financials.
These people are a bunch of losers.
Can I make a request on the motion that you've introduced? I would include that we...
Are you talking about the Antonovich-Molina motion?
Well, it was the Molina-Antonovich motion. From the first point, we further rule, we put in cost effective, which is operational plan, we add also the capital plan.
You mean the construction plan?
Yes, construction plan as well as the operational plan. I think they need to take a look at all of those.
All right.
That's all coming back in 60 days, correct? Right, Bill?
Yes, Senator.
Okay. All right, and then we're going to try for 60 days in your motion. Do a no Jackie Asprey, 120. Okay. Do a progress report for 60. Very good. Okay, with that, roll call.
Mr. Chairman, which one are you taking up first? Are you taking up...
Well, I guess we do the independently, but I mean, they're going to be...
Take them both together or...
All right, first of all, Molina.
Supervisor Molina and Supervisor Antonovich's motion, so Supervisor...
As amended, clerk.
As amended, correct. And also Supervisor Molina had an amendment as well.
Right.
Supervisor Molina, Supervisor Ridley-Thomas, Supervisor Yaroslavski, Supervisor Antonovich, Supervisor Knabey.
Aye.
Supervisor Knabey.
Aye. Motion passed. Next is...
The motion of Supervisor Ridley-Thomas is...
You ought to just announce the vote because I don't think...
She's Molina, Antonovich's motion passed three to five. Three, one.
I see some...
Three, one. Okay.
On the next motion, Supervisor Ridley-Thomas's motion, and it was amended by Supervisor Yaroslavski, Supervisor Molina, Supervisor Ridley-Thomas, Supervisor Yaroslavski, Supervisor Antonovich.
Aye.
Supervisor Knabey.
Aye. Wow. That was 5-0?
5-0. Let's give you a hand.
Both motions passed. All right. We'll be in a loop in general.
Okay.
And Superior Court Judge Terri Smurling said in the Los Angeles Times that being incarcerated is likely to exacerbate mental health problems and to increase the likelihood that inmates will commit new crimes upon their release. It's really good to hear you seriously discuss diversion for people with mental illness for the first time. If you commit to implementing community-based mental health and drug abuse diversion programs, and we urge you to add family reunification and pre-trial release programs, then there's no need for a new women's jail. Women urge you to reject construction of the women's jail and instead to prioritize reducing the poverty of women, which results in women being criminalized in the first place. Two billion dollars would be a good start. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Ruth Tedasco. I'm speaking on behalf of the Every Mother is a Working Mother Network. I'm a mother and a grandmother. And what we see is that women are the fastest-growing population of those being incarcerated. With minimum wage levels so low that we cannot support ourselves or our children, and the dismantling of any safety net, including welfare, women are forced to do whatever we can to keep a roof over our heads and feed our children, resulting in increasing numbers of moms being penalized. Fourteen hundred of the women jailed in 2013 were mothers. Their children were at grave risk of ending up in L.A.'s troubled foster care system or adopted out to strangers. Building a new jail seventy-five miles away in Lancaster will make regular visiting for families and loved ones prohibitively expensive.
Really?
A separation especially traumatic for children. The alternative to create video visitation limits physical family contact, which has been shown to reduce recidivism by twenty-five percent. Mothers of L.A. urge you to reject this plan of a new women's jail. It would be unconscionable to spend a hundred and twenty million dollars to build a new women's jail, plus millions more to run the facility, rather than prioritizing resources to end the poverty of women and children in L.A. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Just thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Sax. Heard a lot of different things. First of all, this perception is regarding the sheriffs and the oversight of the new jails. They may have the oversight of the new jails, but it's the Board of Supervisors that negotiate with the ranking file regarding policies for the sheriff. The sheriff's not involved in all the negotiations. He gets a deal with what the Board of Supervisors and ranking file decide what is policy. Makes it very tough to have any kind of oversight regarding position. Residential drug treatment outreach programs, that means dealing with the eighty-eight other communities in the county. Have you been in the local city council meetings where you've discussed that? No. Beautiful, reminds me, but really reminds me, this discussion is, and it's outside the box, and people just focus on some things, but changing the spots on a leopard. This discussion is about funding. Have you looked into anything these people have done regarding the transit situation in this county? You know, a few years ago, they talked about measure R of raising forty billion dollars. But the budget process from the year before showed that the Metro, Department of Transportation Authority, is making less than seven hundred million dollars a year. So they were going to double sales tax revenue in less than a year, and nobody's questioned it. These are the same people that are coming up with these numbers. You can't change the spots on a leopard. You really want change, you better start when you go to vote, go to vote with a recalling line. And somebody suggested make changes with suggestions. ECFS was honored today, and yet they have a Blue River Commission to tell you how lousy ECFS is doing.
Thank you.
Keep that in mind. Read a whole agenda.
Sir, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Robert Lord. I'd like to quote from an outback piece in the L.A. Times by Terri Smurling, who's a judge of the Los Angeles County Superior Court. He says, "As a Los Angeles County Superior Court judge with more than thirty-one years on the criminal bench, I am all too familiar with what happens when people with serious mental illness get caught up in the criminal justice system. I have seen firsthand that jail is an inappropriate place for many of the mentally ill defendants to end up there. Being incarcerated is likely to exacerbate mental health problems and increase the likelihood that inmates will commit new crimes upon their release. Instead of spending large amounts on a better type of experience for them, we should spend money on local treatment programs that would keep low-risk offenders with mental illness out of jail. The vast majority of the mentally ill defendants who appear before me have been charged with low-level nonviolent felony, such as abuse of the fence, or simple drug possession. And my goal is generally to try to place them in appropriate mental health programs as a condition of probation. But this has become increasingly difficult because of a shrinking number of treatment I'll have to skip over the rest. Surely Judge Smurling would support Supervisor Yaroslavski and Supervisor Ridley-Thomas in calling for very serious exploration of diversion possibilities. And that should happen not just parallel to, but rather before a decision is made about the second plan.
It could be, the two motions are before.
Okay.
Mr. Speaker, my understanding, I'm advised that the numbers that would be created by Supervisor Yaroslavski.
Very good, sir. Right on the money.
The numbers have been vetted by the CEO's office.
When it comes to staffing, I think what's important before we can finalize those numbers, one critical element is something simple like the four. I believe as we move forward right now, and we start working with the architect we'd like to bring onboard, we can have some greater clarity on the space that would be available for staff, and that will also help us finalize the staffing plan. Then we'll have an independent analysis of the financials.
These people are a bunch of losers.
Can I make a request on the motion that you've introduced? I would include that we... Are you talking about the Antonovich-Molina motion?
Well, it was the Molina-Antonovich motion. From the first point, we further move, the budget cost effective, which is operational plan, you add also the capital plans.
You mean the construction plan?
Yes, construction plan as well as the operational plan. I think they need to take a look.
All right.
That's all coming back in sixty days, correct? Right, Bill?
Yes, Senator.
Okay. All right, and then we're going to try for sixty days in your motion. Do no jackass with a hundred and twenty. Okay. Do a progress report for sixty. Very good. Okay, with that, roll call.
Mr. Chairman, which one are you taking out first? Are you taking out?
Well, I guess we do the independently, but I mean, they're going to be...
Take them both together, or?
All right, first of all, Molina's.
Supervisor Molina and Supervisor Antonovich's motion, so Supervisor...
As amended, clarify.
As amended, correct. And also Supervisor Molina had an amendment as well. Supervisor Molina, Supervisor Ridley-Thomas, Supervisor Yaroslavski, Supervisor Antonovich.
Hi.
Supervisor Knabe.
Hi. Motion passed. Next is...
The motion of Supervisor Ridley-Thomas is...
You are just to announce the vote, because I don't think you...
Doug, Susan Molina, Antonovich's motion, pass three to pick, everybody else. Three, one. Okay.
I see some...
Three, one. Okay.
On the next motion, Supervisor Ridley-Thomas's motion, and it was amended by Supervisor Yaroslavski, Supervisor Molina, Supervisor Ridley-Thomas, Supervisor Yaroslavski, Supervisor Antonovich.
Hi.
Wow.
Supervisor Knabe.
Hi.
Wow. That was five, zero.
Five, oh. Let's give you a hand.
Both motions passed. All right. We'll be in motion.